Call the Board of Alderman Meeting to order for the City of Warrenton, June 5, 2012. Would everyone stand for the pledge of allegiance, please?
Pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on the agenda is approval of the minutes work session in regular Board of Alderman Meetings for May 12 -- May 15, 2012. Any concerns or corrections?
I think I motion to approve the minutes from the work session in regular Board of Alderman Meeting for May 15, 2012.
Second. Motion made by Alderman Tallow to approve the minutes for the work session in regular Board of Alderman's Meetings for May 15, 2012, seconded by Alderman Dryer. Roll call vote, please.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alderman Tallow?
Yes.
Motion carried four to zero. I might mention for the record that we have two Alderman absents tonight, Alderman Kendall and Alderman Clark, so there won't be any votes on their behalf. Next item on the agenda is hearing from the public. Once again, I'd like to welcome the public. As I've said before, you're always welcome to attend a meeting. We look forward to seeing you. Any comments that you would like to direct toward the Board, we ask you to limit it to five minutes or less. If anyone would like to address the Board, please step forward to the podium and state your name. Hearing nothing from the public, we're going to move on to the next item on the report. And the Board of Alderman, we extend the same courtesy to you. Anybody on the Board that would like to address us, do so now.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to take a moment to address a couple of concerns that have come to me over the last couple of weeks since the last Board of Alderman Meeting, specifically pertaining to Mr. Shelton's attempt to gather signatures on a petition for a state audit of the city. I fielded a lot of questions, and I've tried to inform citizens. I have had at least two conversations with Mr. Shelton totaling over three or four hours, and have offered to gather what information I can to satisfy his concerns or curiosities. And we've discussed his concerns, and some of the concerns that he's expressed are decisions that have been made in the past by this Board. Some of those decisions are decisions that I agree with him on, that they weren't decisions that I would have necessarily made, but I stress to him that they were legal decisions made by a sworn Board. In the end, Mr. Shelton has expressed to me that he's taken a group of decisions and determined that something just doesn't smell right, is what he has determined. And I try and express to the citizens, the ability to petition the state for an audit is a procedure that is valid, that is necessary in some cases. My only concern is that there is an audit that's been performed, there's a willingness on my part, and I believe on other officials in the city, to provide that information prior to taking the step of requesting an audit that may cost us $50,000 to $60,000. And I hope that the citizens of the city realize that that offer is open to any citizen that has questions or concerns about how their city is run. So, that's all I have.
Thank you, John. Any other Aldermen have any comments or concerns? And we're going to move on to the Mayor's Report. My report's pretty short tonight, but I do want to mention a couple of things to you. I think I reminded most of the Aldermen that we have been invited to a seminar on the sunshine law to be held at Winchville City Hall tomorrow evening at 6:00. Tom Durkin from the Attorney General's Office is going to conduct the seminar, and he extended an invitation for those that want to attend. Other item I wanted to mention to you on here that we probably need to get some thought to, in the past, last year, on our Board of Alderman Meeting that fell near the Fourth of July, I think we actually postponed or canceled that meeting. So, our next meeting in July is July 3, the day before the Fourth. I wanted to see what your thoughts and interest was in either postponing or canceling that meeting or rescheduling it. If we reschedule it, we're just going to have a fuller docket for the next meeting. So, I'd be interested in your comments or thoughts on that.
Well, I think it depends on what we may have up for that particular agenda. Normally, it's something that we can just move on to the next meeting, so hopefully we can still do that, because I know it might be inconvenienced for some people to try to make that meeting if they've got plans already.
People that want to leave town or vacation or something like that. Alderman Dryer, you have any comments on yet?
No, it doesn't matter to me.
It doesn't matter?
I'm free anytime.
Okay. Alderman Flake?
Same thing, it just depends on what's on the agenda. If we've got something that's real important, then we'll have to take a look at it, but otherwise, outside of that, it doesn't make any difference to me.
Alderman Cornell?
We're not going out of town, we'll be available. We have a meeting.
Okay. So, I guess the situation is we need to see what our docket is as we get closer to that time and see if we need to proceed with it. We'd make a decision as it gets closer. Other item I would mention to you, I had an invitation to, it was called a hard hat tour of the Kreider Health Center this morning. Very interesting facility, very impressed with the building. They're going to schedule an open house here in about the middle of June. I'm sure we'll all get an invitation to tour the building at that time. Other thing I mentioned to you, there's, I've had a few comments about our neighbors, the County Commission on the courthouse, on their remodeling project. And I had a chance to visit with a couple of the Commissioners today and ask them where they were at on that. Their situation is they're close to sending out bids for the remodeling. They're very much aware that they need a building permit from us so we can do our inspections. They indicated to me that they would be down Thursday to procure a building permit, and they would probably do that under protest, waiting for the final results of the appeals court. So, I don't think there's any big issue other than just wait and see. And that's all I have. Maybe I might mention a reminder that we do have a workshop scheduled for June 13 to work on our budget, so I might put that on your calendar and keep that available. I'm ready to move on to item number seven, hiring and introduction of Jeff Scanlon. Who would like to introduce Jeff?
Who wants to say?
He can make the motion.
Jeff's not here.
Jeff is here.
Jeff is here, but we need a motion to hire him.
To hire you? Okay.
I'll make that motion.
Okay.
To hire Jeff Scanlon. Do I need to specify the --
Yes.
For the position of police officer and full-time rate of $15.60 an hour?
And start date, too?
With a start date of May 21, 2012.
Second. Motion made by Alderman Cornell, seconded by Alderman Flake for the hiring of Jeff Scanlon as a police officer, full-time at $15.60 an hour, with a start date of May 21, 2012. Roll call vote, please.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alderman Tallow?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Motion carried four to zero, two absences.
And if I may, Mayor?
Yes.
It's my pleasure to introduce our new police officer, Jeff Scanlon.
Welcome, Jeff.
Welcome, Jeff.
Item eight, on the agenda, a special permission for excessive noise for the Warren County Fair on July. Someone like to address that issue, or?
Please.
Pardon me? Would you come to the podium and state your name, please?
My name is Mike Eckhoff. I'm currently the president of the Fair Board out there again this year, second year doing it. We are looking for permission to stay open past curfew. It's always been in the past that the Board, for the week of the fair, they allow us to stay till midnight each night of the fair, and then they granted permission Tuesday, I think it was 1:30, on the tractor pull evening. And we've changed things up just a little bit this year. Our tractor pull, we've split it up the last two years. We did trucks on Friday night and tractors on Saturday, so it is over usually by about 11:00. It don't last till midnight, but we try to make it last as long as we can. On Tuesday, which will be the third before the fourth, we have scheduled a mud run, and with everybody working, we really can't start it till about 6:30 or 7:00 in the evening. So, typically, they take about anywhere from six to eight hours to run the cycle of the mud run. So, we are looking for, to change, I guess, from the extended 1:30 curfew on the tractor pull evening to Tuesday for the mud run. And then we would also like permission to extend the curfew to midnight each night of the fair.
Alderman Flake, what time do you go to bed?
We're going to pledge to work in the kitchen. He's going to be up late this year, we're looking for kitchen volunteers.
There you go. I understand.
Just tell him to put some mufflers on.
But we usually have everything wrapped up by midnight every night. Like I said, our tractor pull and stuff usually over with by about 11:00, so, but I know the mud run will not be over with by midnight, so that's why we'd like to have the extended time to 1:30.
So, the mud run is the main problem, having extended hours?
Yeah, we usually take till midnight the whole week, just so we're good on everything with the music and the beer garden and whatnot. That's been, in the past, for several years we've done that. We just like to have the extension on Tuesday night till 1:30.
Mike, when you talk about starting at 6:00 or 7:00 and taking six to eight hours, is there a specific time that you would say, you know what, when it gets to 1:00 or 2:00, no matter where we are, we're going to shut off then?
Well, that's what we'd do if we got the curfew extended to 1:30. We would hope that it would all be over with by midnight, so we can all go to bed and everything, you know? But, like I said, with it, in the past, it's typically taken six to eight hours of running. We'd hope it'd be over, but can't promise it would be. So, if we could have it till 1:30, then at 1:30 --
You'll guarantee that it's 1:30?
Yeah, we would have to shut it down.
Okay.
Yep. You know, we'd just finish up our class that we were in, and then it would be over with.
Fantastic.
You don't see any issue with that, do you, Treve? I mean, we've always, they've been doing this for the last few years, and everything's worked out fine.
Yeah, it hasn't been an issue.
Probably the biggest issue would be neighbors that live close by.
Correct.
So far, we haven't had any issues with that or anything.
We have tried to mend bridges here from the past with all the neighbors and with the city and with everybody, tried to get along and cooperate with everybody, and everybody seems to be, you know, relatively back on good graces with everything, so.
I'm okay with you.
That's the way it's supposed to be. Any concerns from the Board?
Not from me.
I want to entertain a motion to authorize extending the time.
Okay, let's see if I can say this right. Make a motion to extend the time to midnight during the fair, except for Tuesday during the mud run, and extend that to 1:30?
Correct.
Is that right? During the week of the fair, primarily for the noise issue.
Have a motion on the floor from Alderman Tallow, seconded by Alderman Dryer, to extend the fair hours to midnight, with the exception of the mud run, which will be extended to 1:30 a.m. Roll call vote on that, please.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alderman Tallow?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Motion carried four to zero with two absences. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you very much. I'm the next on the list.
Are you the next item, too?
Yeah, yeah.
All right, item number nine, request for road closures on July 1 for Warren County Fair Parade, Walton Street, Cole Street, Avenue 11 a.m. to 5:30 p.m., and Highway M and Pinkney Street, 3 p.m. to 5 p.m. Same as last year?
Yeah, except we are doing it on Sunday. Again, last year, we changed it to Tuesday evening, I believe it was, and we're going to put it back on Sunday, and it will start at 3:00. It will take the same route as it did last year, it'll start at the Blackhawk Middle School and continue on to the high school. We like to close down Cool Avenue so we can have extra parking room in the front, because it's a political year this year, there'll be quite a few floats and whatnot, so if we can close that down, and then Walton Street also, prior to the parade starting, that would help us out tremendously with parking. And then, we anticipate that it'll be over with in around two hours, the parade. If we keep it till 5:30, that allows me time to pick up the trash and kind of get everybody to leave and head out for the fairgrounds or go home or whatever. So, but, like I said, it would definitely be over with by 5:30, it'd just be maybe me picking trash up or something, be out there with the road to be open.
Mike, what portion of Walton Street do you want closed from 11 a.m.?
The chief closes down the hill by the ballpark for us.
Okay, just on the east side of 47?
Right, yes. Yep, we close down Cool Avenue from like the beginning of school to the end of it, the whole street, and then just that one portion of it. But we usually try to keep our, like our fire trucks and big trucks on Walton. Last year, we put everybody behind school, and it was kind of hectic with the fire trucks getting in and out back there and whatnot, so we like to keep them out in front.
We're not affecting any residents there? I can only think there's only one resident on Cool Street.
There is, there's one resident, and they have been great. I mean, we haven't had any problem with it. Last year, they just parked their car on what's at College in front right there so they could leave if they needed to, but no, that's the only resident on there, and like I said, they have been very good to work with. There's no issues with them. I haven't talked to them this year, but in the past, there hasn't been an issue. So, and then there won't be any residents, the churches should be out by the time we get started, you know? It's at the bottom of Walton. And if the church, if the crowd hasn't left church, it's not urgent that we shut it down at 11:00, you know, we just try to get ahead of the game for when people show up.
Usually, they'll be there.
Mm-hmm. Usually, everybody shows up at 2:30. It just starts at 3:00. Y'all are relaxed.
Anyone have any other comments or concerns? I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to have a road closures on July 1 for the Warren County Fair Parade on Walton Street and Cole Avenue from 11 a.m. to 5:30 p.m., and on Highway M and Pinkney Street, 3 p.m. to 5:30 p.m.
Motion made by Alderman Tallow, seconded by Alderman Flake, to honor the request for road closures on July 1 for the Warren County Fair Parade, Walton Street and Cole Street Avenue from 11 a.m. to 5:30 p.m., and Highway M and Pinkney Street, 3 p.m. to 5:30 p.m. Roll call vote, please.
Alderman Tallow?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Motion carried four to zero with two absences.
Okay, well, thank you very much, and look forward to working with you throughout the year. I know there's a couple of new faces up here, so we'll get together and catch up. We had a meeting, when was that? It was a month ago, two months ago, I guess it was now, with the city to discuss. So, if you guys have any questions, I know new members didn't get to get to the meeting and discuss. We try to set it up with the city every year, make sure we're all coinciding with everybody, so if you have any questions, feel free to give me a phone call or anything, and like I said, look forward to having a good year and working with you.
Thank you. Thank you for your time. Item number 10, request for a road closure on June 16 for a block party. Anyone here would like to address that?
My name is Eric Schmidt, I am pastor at College United Methodist Church, and this request is on behalf of the United Methodist Church, that we are wanting to block off a section of the road for safety purposes for all the children who will be gathering for the block party. We're estimating to be about 75 to 100 people who will be coming. We just want to make sure that there's no through traffic through there that might interrupt with any of the kids. All the activities we'll be doing will be in the yards, not in the street, so if there is an emergency that needed to take place, emergency vehicles, and you get through, there'd be no problem with that. All the residents in that area have signed off on that, I believe that was turned in in their paperwork, that they're all okay with us being out there, so I'll be happy to answer any questions.
I guess one of my questions you've kind of already answered, you're really not utilizing the streets?
No.
The activities are not in the streets?
No, this is just because of the sheer number of people that will be present, we want to make sure that there's safety for all the children and all the others who will be participating.
And that was one of my, or another one of my concerns, is if we needed to get an emergency vehicle in or out of there?
I mean, it's -- Yeah, there would be nothing in the street that, you know, we'll, you know, we'll put up some sort of blockade or something that can just be, you know, hand moved out of the way, but there will no, there'll be nothing set up in the street itself that will be blocking any traffic if anything had to get through.
So, you're going to be on the northern end of Balboa Circle?
It's actually going to be on Santa Maria, if you have that.
So, Santa Maria and a portion of Balboa?
It says a portion of Balboa, but it really will stop right before you get to Balboa, so that way, if you're familiar with how those streets are, it's kind of like a figure eight, so we're just going to take out that little, just one little arm there.
Gotcha.
The names that you gave us of your contacts, is that everybody that has a house?
Yeah, that's everybody who lives on that street that would be in any way affected.
Well, I just think that this is the first time we ever had a request to close down a street or block off a street in a residential area. We've had it downtown, we've had it up by the NR Church, which adjoins the church property, that's the only two places that I know of, but I've, this is the first time we've ever closed down a street in a residential area, and I just have some concerns about that.
Can I address your, can you be more specific as to what your concern would be?
Well, I just think we're going to open the door here, with this, being this is the first request, we're closing down the street in the residential subdivision in an area, I just think this is going to open the door, and we'll probably get some more requests in the future.
Personally, I, if we got another request of this nature, with all of the affected neighbors signing off on it, I'd be inclined to authorize that also. Chief, what's your view on safety concerns, or?
Yeah, I took a couple of things into account when I looked this over. First of all, you guys did a really good job of sort of thinking that through from a safety standpoint. There's a dead-end road there, they obviously did think through the emergency vehicle thing. The other thing that I think this accomplishes is it helps bring the neighbors together. So, kind of thinking outside the box here, it's good to see neighborhoods coming together like that and doing things together, and, you know, sort of fostering a good neighborhood and goodwill.
Yeah, that's the, that's the hope, you know? We live in a society in which we don't all know our neighbors or trust them, I think it's a good way for everyone to get to know, you know, who people are and just be together.
Well, I agree with Alderman Cornell, I think it's a great idea, I'd like to see more of it. Again, each situation is going to be looked at individually because of safety concerns, but like the chief said, it seems like you've got it all mapped out. Now, I know that area, there's different ways to get in and out if it was a concern, so I think it's great to work with it.
I will say that I went to, I was invited and had just a moment to stop by a block party in Field of Dreams on the, I guess it was two Saturdays ago. That was on a dead-end street, so they didn't request any streets to be blocked off, but it was interesting to see the, all of the neighbors that got together, and they actually had some live music there, so kind of impressed. I'm waiting for our neighborhood to do that.
John, you can hit it up.
It's all yours. Alderman Dryer, you have an opinion on this?
I just want, I guess, what Alderman Tallow said, I guess that Balboa Circle, that goes on around, so it meets out of the road, so they can get in and out. That's one thing I was wondering about.
I'll entertain a motion.
So moved. You want me to spell it out?
Alderman, motion made by Alderman Tallow, seconded by Alderman Dryer, to allow the road closure for a June 16 block party, Santa Maria, starting at Page Marie, and a portion of Balboa Circle from noon till 5:00. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post likewise. Motion carried four to zero with two absences. Thank you.
Thank you.
Enjoy yourself, have fun.
Am I over?
I might.
Item number 11, liquor license request from El Jimador Mexican Restaurant, located at 512 Warren County Circle for liquor by the drink license. Is there anybody here from El Jimador to address this?
No, actually, what this is, new ownership, so they had to get a whole new license, it's still the same managing, managing group, but it's just new ownership.
Other things down there at El Jimador?
No.
No problem? Make a motion that we, we'd be the license and request for El Jimador Mexican Restaurant at 512 Warren County Center for liquor by the drink.
Motion made by Alderman Tallow, seconded by Alderman Dryer, for the liquor license request from El Jimador Mexican Restaurant, located at 512 Warren County Circle for a liquor by the drink license. Roll call vote, please.
Alderman Tallow?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Motion carried four to zero with two absences. Item number 12, liquor license renewals and catch the glow liquor license renewal for 2012, 2013. I assume this is for everybody that has a liquor license in the city of Warrenton?
We have to read all these off, do we?
I hope not. If we do, you're going to have to --
Just do like submitted list, and I'll put it in the minutes there.
Are there any of these on this list that we've had any issues with? Or all of these are businesses in good standing with no liquor violations?
Anybody have a conservative issues?
I'll make the motion that we approve the liquor license renewals and catch the glow liquor licenses for 2012, 2013.
Motion made by Alderman Flake, seconded by Alderman Cornell, to renew the liquor license and catch the glow liquor license for 2012, 2013. Roll call vote, please.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alderman Tallow?
Yes.
Motion carried four to zero, two absences. Item 13, letter from the Warren County Communication Billings for mules. Who's going to address?
I'd be more than happy to address that. I am actually the one that asked for this to be placed onto the agenda. I've met with Chief Howdy Show regarding the letter from the Warren County Emergency Services, stating that it is their intent at the end of this year to start billing for mules entries, which the chief will be able to more accurately describe. A service that they provide, they claim is a courtesy, but that courtesy has been extended since day one of the operation of the 911 Center. It's my belief that, that service is, a service that they, when the tax was passed to support the 911 -- to support the nine-one-one center, although not specifically spelled out, I believe that it was everybody's belief that that was a service that they were going to provide. And there's more supporting details and arguments to that that doesn't need to come up right now. My, well, I'll turn it over to the chief and let him address his concerns.
And I think it would be unfair to go forward without just a little bit of background on what mules is. Mules is the Missouri statewide database that keeps track of criminal records. Basically, every time we have a warrant in our court, that warrant goes over to dispatch, they enter the warrant into mules for us, then every law enforcement agency in Missouri and outside of Missouri for that matter has access to that wanted record. Other things that go in there are missing or stolen articles, and basically that's, that's the gist of it. The Warren County Emergency Services Administrator, Andy Ellard, sent us this letter and says that their board has decided to discontinue entering and maintaining mules entries for all law enforcement agencies in the county. Their claim is that the increases in the cost of doing business and less tax revenue is what's driving this. However, there's other evidence that indicates that, that's sort of contrary to what their ultimate plan is. So I have, I have issues with the city paying ninety-four hundred dollars a year for this service, which is how she calculates it out, what our cost share would be, to continue with this, because as she says later in, in the letter, they're going to offer us the option of still having them do it. And honestly, when this first came up, I tried to wrap my brain around how the police department and the court could possibly get this accomplished on our own, and it's virtually impossible. So they really sort of have us locked in to doing something here. I am in concurrence completely with Alderman Cornell. This was something that has been provided, they say as a courtesy, but I think it is a service that they provide that should continue to be provided. Really what I would like to see from the board and the mayor is support for us going forward and not supporting what they want to do. And, you know, really what I, what I would hope is that maybe attendance at one of their board meetings to express your thoughts on the situation. But it really is, it's a situation that I, I think they should provide the service ongoing, but they don't. So we clearly do not see that.
Not to interrupt you, but I just have a question. So if we lose the, their support for the mules and, and we call nine-one, or you, one of your officers calls nine-one-one, what do we get for that? For what service are we getting without?
The, the only service that the administrator says they're required to do is answer the phones and dispatch calls. That's it.
Well, and if I can add a couple things, I've actually had the opportunity to speak with the sheriff also. And if you notice, although ninety-four hundred dollars as a recurring, year after year, is a lot of money to me, the sheriff's office is looking at forty-seven thousand dollars as their portion of that. His comment to me was that he believes that every other agency's costs are going to be higher than that. And his example that he used was a city officer makes an arrest and charges them not with a municipal violation, but a state law violation. If that turns into a warrant, his opinion is if it originated from a city officer's activities, it's the city's responsibility, not his responsibility. This has, this has a potential to become a large mess. And I just, even if, even if it was five thousand dollars, even if it was a tolerable amount, my, my issue with it is those funds that tax was passed for them to provide this service, I believe they'd be irresponsible for us to take on additional costs that I believe they're already receiving funds to do. And I think we all know that times are tough and be, this would be like the city of Warrenton saying, you know what, that's a state maintained road. You had a wreck on it, we're not going to work that accident. It's still our responsibility. So I'm off my sub-box for now.
I did visit with the mayor of Truesdale today and he, we discussed this, this very same, same thing. And his thought was that he, he thought if we wanted to go to the board and, and attend one of the meetings, that, that we would be better off, everybody joining together, Truesdale, the sheriff department, the Warrenton Police Department, and going as a group, that we might, might have more clout doing that.
Agreed.
Chief, have you reached out to the chief of, I guess it's, well, Truesdale, Marksville, Wright City?
I talked specifically to the chief of Wright City earlier this week, or perhaps late last week, and he is not in position yet to say yes or no, although he's leaning towards not supporting this.
What other board meeting?
I'm sorry, sir?
What other board meetings?
I think it's the fourth Thursday of the month.
Are they in the evening?
They're in the evening.
That'd be more plausible to make all the, everybody go.
Counselor Graville, do you have any input on this?
Well, I think at this point, it's premature to, you know, really say specifically regarding a legal opinion on it, because it sounds like they've kind of put this out there to get some feedback from the cities. I think getting feedback from the cities is obviously, you know, sometimes sending a letter, which we've done before for other collect entities, is an attempt to begin a dialogue. So I think obviously taking a step to follow through on that dialogue is really what needs to be done at this point.
Alderman Flake?
I agree. I think we should get the chiefs and the sheriff's association, everybody together, and go attend the meeting and let them know our feelings on this situation. Will this hold off a while till we get more information on it?
Do you have an agreement on that?
I wouldn't, I wouldn't even go as far as maybe go with a follow-up letter just from us for right now, but still maybe get with everyone else to attend it just so they know directly from us how we feel.
I think that's a good idea. Do we want that letter to come from the board or Mr. Graville or Mr. Thorne? Who do you want to institute that letter?
I would prefer it not be Mr. Graville.
Yeah, that seems to be...
Yeah, from the board or my, I would care.
Okay.
All right. Everybody in agreement with that then? All right, we'll, we'll proceed from that direction. I don't think we need a motion on that, do we? Melanie, just send a letter?
No.
Okay.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're ready to move on to Director of Operations, Finance Officer Terry Thorne.
The first item I have for you this evening is a request to pay the accounts payable from the department. The total is one hundred seventy-seven thousand, seven hundred sixty-two dollars and fifty-six cents.
Anyone have any questions or concerns about the bills? What was that amount again?
One hundred seventy-seven thousand, seven hundred sixty-two dollars and fifty-six cents.
What second one is this? I'll make the motion that we approve the accounts payable for one hundred seventy-seven thousand, seven hundred sixty-two dollars and fifty-six cents.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Flake, seconded by Alderman Dryer to pay accounts payable in amount of one hundred seventy-seven thousand, seven hundred sixty-two dollars and fifty-six cents. Roll call vote please.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alderman Tallo?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Motion carried, four to zero, two absences.
The next item I have for you is a request for approval for the mayor's signing for the billing services agreement between Coventry Healthcare Tri-County Agency and the city of Warrenton. This is something new, as I understand it, and Scott Costello from Tri-County is here to answer any questions that you all might have. But as I understand this, it is a required disclosure that was not previously required, so that the understanding is out there that the agency is getting paid a three percent fee monthly for being in control and overseeing our GHP healthcare plan through Coventry Healthcare. As I understand it, it is not increasing our costs, but has always been a part of it and is a part of what our current cost is. And Scott, you want to add anything?
This is changing nothing, it's just a disclosure.
Right, it's, it's part of the healthcare reform legislation. Do you need me to call a son?
Please.
One of the elements of the healthcare reform legislation that was passed a couple of years ago, one of the phased-in items was disclosure of compensation for the coverage that was provided. Now, it only applies to health insurance. There are some states that actually require it on property and casualty insurance, autos and homes and things like that. Missouri's not one of them. So, you know, obviously the intent is for the purchaser of the insurance to understand that the individual or the entity that's representing them to the carrier for that coverage receives some compensation for it. So prior to the healthcare reform, that disclosure was not required. I'm sure all of you are aware that it, there was still a, a compensation to the representation for the years that I've helped the city with their health insurance benefits package, and I'm certain that prior agencies and brokerages that were involved with health insurance benefits for the city did as well. The, there've been some changes over the years, compensation as far as commission levels on health insurance have come down some, but of course, that's offset to a large degree by the rapid increase in health rates in general. So, you know, a, a plan that was paying five or six percent five years ago with rate increases that would occur typically from year to year to year, the compensation commission percentage effectively can be reduced and the total dollars of compensation to the representative are going to be in the same ballpark generally. And you wouldn't be spending additional money. This is actually, it's part of the renewal that I believe all of you looked at in April, and it's, it's, in fact, it was in the, in the quote, it's not very well spelled out in the quote from GHP, but it's represented in the quote as what's called a broker pass through.
If the commission changes in the future, do we have to redo an additional ordinance to reflect that or?
Well, every year, unless the healthcare law is somehow changed or, or I guess invalidated, my expectation would be that we would bring this to you in any given year that, that we were serving in the capacity of representation for your health benefits.
And this is a uniform situation with all health companies now in Missouri?
Uh, it's a requirement on all health insurance in the state of Missouri, well, I guess it's a requirement on all health insurance nationally. But there are exceptions, I'm not aware of any. There are a couple of different directions that health insurers go with compensation. Several insurers, GHP included, a few years back began to move towards, away from a percentage commission and towards a per employee, per month, flat amount. And that can range anywhere, I've seen them as low as ten dollars per employee per month and approaching thirty dollars per employee per month. In the case of the city's health benefits, when we began working on, actually previous to working on the city's renewal, I had a small, much, much smaller group that came up for renewal and had a considerable health rate increase. And as we got to looking at that particular group and looking at that flat per employee per month fee instead, the group actually could realize a savings if we instead went to a flat percentage commission. In their case, if I remember correctly, I used four percent. So when the city's health insurance renewal rates, when they, the company first contacted me and started giving me an idea of where they thought that the rate increase would be, which was pretty substantial, going forward in the process of trying to get that under control, I asked if there would be any savings to the city to go away from the per employee per month and instead to the, the flat commission percentage. And so our account executive at GHP that services your group confirmed that that would actually result in a lower overall cost to the city, and that was my intent and interest. And so that's why we came forward with this. Had we gone the other route, you wouldn't sign any disclosure, it, you'd just be paying a twenty-some dollar per month per employee at fifty-six employees in the plan.
Any, any questions for Mr. Costello? Any concerns? Do we need a motion to enter into that agreement?
It's a contract, so we have it set up as an ordinance later in the, on the agenda, correct?
Oh, okay, it's coming up later.
Bill number twenty-one dash twelve.
Okay, good. Okay, if no one has any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Costello.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you, Scott. The next item I have for you is a question regarding the August sales tax holiday. This is the time of year where if the city chooses not to be part of the August sales tax holiday, we need to report that to the state. If we choose to be part of the opt-in, which is what we're considered to be unless we notify them, then we don't need to take any action. But the question for you all this evening is whether or not you choose to continue to participate in the August sales tax holiday.
It looks like the impact to the city if we participate in it's about three to four thousand dollars.
And we have now done this for enough years that we could take the quarterly tax payments from certain entities and get some idea of what it looks like. There's certainly no guarantee that that's a realistic figure, but as best we can tell from the information we have available, that's what it looks like the difference in averages.
I'm okay with staying with you.
I am too.
Absolutely.
I think it's a benefit to a lot of people, so I think it's worthwhile.
Will they entertain a motion to participate in the sales tax holiday?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Tallo, seconded by Alderman Flake to continue to participate in the sales tax holiday. A roll call vote?
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alderman Tallo?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Motion carried, four to zero with two absences.
The only other thing I have for you this evening is the draft letter that you should have found at your desk this evening in regard to the recreation department. After we had our work session on soccer, we agreed that we were not going to take any action for this year because it was too late in the season, but that we would put together a communication to go out to all the participants. This is the draft letter that we've put together for certainly any considerations or changes that any of you might have. And we've had discussions, I've had discussions with Phil Tallo, who's chair of the Recreation Committee, in regard to who the appropriate signer of this letter should be. He indicated he'd be happy to do it, but also that perhaps Alderman Cornell, since he's brought a lot of concerns to us and is out there and directly involved with the participants, might be the right person. And Alderman Cornell has said he certainly would be willing to do that. So the question before you is, what is your choice and how do you want signature of this letter to go out?
What do you think, Mr.? What do you think, Mr. Alderman Tallow?
Well, I mean, if, if anybody has any concerns, and if not, then we'll just leave it, leave the letter as it is, and like, I'll sign off on it, and Alderman Cornell wants to, that's fine too, if anybody else wants to.
As far as that goes, the entire board could sign off.
They're certainly good.
Would you all feel more comfortable about everybody signing off on the letter?
Everybody can, or Alderman Tallow can, makes no difference to me. My, my main thing is, let's, let's, you and I, I've discussed that with several participants and several residents who are enthusiastic about the thought of participating in.
Why don't we go ahead and prepare the letter, whoever wants to sign it, sign it, and we'll go from there.
Okay. You all will have to let me know though if you'd like an appropriate signature.
Because you want to signature both of them. Let's put everybody on it.
Okay, we can do that.
Put the entire board on it.
And that's all I have for you, thank you.
All right, we're ready to hear from the chief of police.
Good evening, mayor and board. Before I get to my agenda item, I just wanted to mention that we will be doing the cop-on-top event on June 16th. It'll be at Fast Lane Central from 9:00 in the morning to 3:00 in the afternoon. Officer Tweet has volunteered to be the cop on top of the building. We hope to raise a substantial amount of money for Special Olympics Missouri, and he's really embraced it, and so has Warranton Oil. They're very excited to be helping us out with it, so hopefully it'll be a big event. The torch run went well, torch run went, went very well. We had 13 runners, I believe, and pretty good attendance at the reception afterwards, sold a few t-shirts, so.
I, I heard a lot of good things about that. Some of the board members wanted to participate in the run, and we'll, we'll try to get them in there next year.
Okay.
And carry the torch.
That's good.
Not sure which.
Good luck to you, Alderman.
I don't recall that conversation.
There's certainly no question that I'm not built for running. And how much do we have to raise to keep Officer Tweet on top of the building?
I'm not going to set a goal, I'm hoping just to come up there, definitely, but I, I don't know, I'd, I'd like to see us raise a couple thousand dollars if we flip that, that would be great.
What was the date and time again?
June 16th, it's a Saturday, from 9:00 in the morning to 3:00 in the afternoon.
Well, that's quickly approaching.
It is indeed.
What about the Black Hawk Middle School?
Black Hawk Middle School bully blocker video. This really is an opportunity for me to dote on Officer Binder a little bit. Since his arrival in late November, he determined that bullying at the middle school is a huge issue. So, he has, since then, done some things to put projects in place and programs in place, hopefully that will happen next year, to start addressing those. But one of the other things that he did this year proactively was really get behind the generation of this video that I'm going to show you in a minute, it's just a minute long. KSDK did a, a small segment every morning, I think the entire month of May, where they showed a different video from schools all over the metropolitan area. And they actually did choose Black Hawk Middle Schools and showed it one morning, but I wanted to give everybody an opportunity who might have missed that, a chance to see that here today. As I said, it's just a minute long, but Officer Binder, in the, in the time between him being a deputy at Lincoln County coming to work here, actually did some work in the video industry, worked on some videos himself. So, he lent his experience and his equipment to the generation of this video, so.
So did you get that text?
What a loser.
Oh my gosh, I know, just look at her.
Freeze, I'm Bully Walker, and I'm here to tell you that this is an example of cyberbullying.
That's so funny.
Yeah, I know. Watch out, you superhero, freeze. Freeze, I'm Bully Walker again, and this is an example of verbal bullying.
Watch this.
Watch it out, loser. Freeze, Bully Walker back once again to tell you that this is an example of physical bullying.
Oh my gosh, did you see Kelly today? She looks like she's trying to dress up or something.
She looks like my grandmother, she's a wallah, I know, right? Freeze, Bully Walker back once again to tell you that this is an example of social bullying. Kelly, don't let those bullies bother you, you're perfect just the way you are.
Thanks, Bully Walker, you're right, I need a little positive advice.
Take the mug off and be the superhero in your school.
So the kids were responsible for blocking it, doing all of the dialogue, they put all of that together. Officer Binder just gave them some ideas and some direction. As I said, he, he offered them the use of his camera, but they took all the shots and put the whole thing together, so it was actually pretty cool.
Good. I think it's a concern throughout the country.
Absolutely.
Not just here in Missouri.
Absolutely, and I, I'm hoping that we'll see a major difference next year in the middle school.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Is that all you have?
It is.
Okay. I'm on item 16, Public Works Director, Guy Gevers.
Mm-hmm, Mayor and Board, you should have an estimate project cost for East Walton Street to Southeast Street. I'm looking to use some of the money from the balance of the downtown stormwater, city hot mix that we have left, and then we have a storm project that's not done, and then general stormwater. With us adding water flow down Hudson Street, I feel it's going to create an issue, and we want to move it down East Walton to Southeast Street. And I have Lewis and Beatty looking at the plans on that.
Do you know which side of the street you're going to go down on Southeast Street?
Well, right now, no, I do not.
Yeah, okay.
They're looking at that now.
And what about on Walton Street, are they going to stay on the south side?
It's going to stay, are you familiar with where it dumped across?
Very, yes, very.
We're going to stay on that side of the street and take it down. We'll put a catch basin right there.
And then, at the corner of Southeast, is there going to be an inlet there, one or two?
The way I looked at it, I was going to have two.
One on either side?
One on either side, depending on which side we go on. And I budgeted for it being in the street, just in case, that's where it's going to end up, and I got the mix in the rock there. If it works out that we can put it on the easement side in the yard, that'll work out better. And we, I do have the storm bases blocked off, so if we do get a heavy rain, it's going to be back the way it was originally.
We're not going to put it in that young lady's yard?
That's correct.
So the total cost here, this $21,178 is the total cost to complete that project?
That's correct.
Okay. I don't think we have much choice.
No, sir.
We can't just leave it, leave it run out on people's property.
Wouldn't you anticipate something from Louis Beatty?
He told me, oh, two weeks somewhere in there, he knows that, that we kind of pressed for time.
And is there some type of thought of, I hope that we're going to, I've fielded several calls from residents on Southeast Street as to what's going to, what's going to occur there, I hope there's some communication with some of those residents as to how they're going to be affected with this.
I talked to Mike Schilling.
Mike Schilling?
Schilling, and I seen him, me and Brad seen him the other day.
Okay.
We told him what our plan was, and he didn't see no issues with, because it's moving away from his house.
Yeah, he's, he's got a little bit of an erosion issue on there.
Right, and it's going to go on the other side of where his issues were.
Okay.
What size pipe is that, what, or?
Eight, eight, 18 inch.
18 inches. There it is, I can't read. So, this is a non-budgeted item?
There was $8,900 left over from the original stormwater, so the rest would be a non-budgeted.
Do we need a motion on that to, to spend that money?
Make a motion to approve the expenditure of $21,178 for the East Walton Street slash Southeast Street stormwater project.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Cornell, seconded by Alderman Dryer to approve the extension of the Hudson Street Stormwater Project in the amount of $21,178. Are you fine with the way I read that motion?
Absolutely.
A roll call vote.
Alderman Tallow?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Motion carried four zero with two absences. Is that it, Mr. Gevers?
Yes, sir, thank you.
Thank you. Economic Development Director, Michelle Slunter.
Good evening, for you tonight, you have my economic development update, and other than the Warren County ED group, if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer those. We'll hit the Warren County ED group a little bit later on.
I've got one, but it's about the questions later.
About what?
About the questions that, I'll ask you that at that time.
Okay. And if there's no questions on that, I'll move on to the request to apply for the bulletproof vest grant program. We need four vests, and this program gives us 50% of the vests, approximately $672 per vest, there are about $20 for shipping, so our total would be roughly $2,780, and the grant would give us 50% of that, so we'd be receiving approximately $1390 for this.
Anyone have any concerns or questions about applying for the grant?
Well, say we do.
You need a motion on that?
Yes, please.
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Tallow, seconded by Alderman Flake to authorize the economic developer to apply for the bulletproof vest grant. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close likewise. Motion carried four zero, two absences.
And my last item I have for you is an update on the Warren County Economic Development Council meeting. I attended the board meeting, and after they had discussed some of their items, I was nominated to the board, so I wanted to let you know that. They have decided to utilize a 501(c)(6) versus a 501(c)(3). They talked to Cindy J. Burke and some other accountants, and they also talked to other EDCs to see how they're handled, and came up that the majority are 501(c)(3), or (c)(6). So they decided to go ahead and do that, and they're having Cindy J. Burke file that for them. And their concern is, is still with the audit, it's not, it's technically an audit, and I'm going to say this word wrong, attestation, and that is actually what the city is requesting. And they're saying that it's still going to cost a significant amount of money and that individuals in our community cannot do this, so they have to go outside of our community for this, and it's never wondering if there's something different that our board would be willing to take in place of, of that, whether it be maybe a copy of their tax returns that have been filed and sent to the federal government, or just something different. So they're just wanting me to go to the board and see if there's something different that you'd be willing to accept, other than, than what we've requested due to the cost of it.
What, what did they think the cost would be?
And they've heard different, different prices, and it, I have in my notes anywhere I'm thinking from like $1,500 to $1,800 for this, and they're concerned at the cost of that, and there was a lot of discussion going on, and I, I think they had talked to someone who said that they actually have to have like a company that gets several of them before they can do that. But I went and talked to Jan with the Chamber for when the Chamber had this done, when they actually came and requested money from the city, and their paid, the amount they paid was $1,075, and that was to DDZ CPA, and she gave me the money, uh, their phone number, I'm sorry. And then I also contacted Alice Marshall from the Downtown W Association, and they had a firm called Ross Spinner and Kramer, and they charged them in 2009, $1,250 to have this done.
I wonder why, have they contacted any one of these companies?
They have not, I got this after, I had talked to them, and wanted to come to the board and.
You know, we, we had talked about changing our contract and changing our verbiage and terminology, and they're, and we were kind of surprised that they went ahead and signed the contract we sent them. We thought maybe they would wait until, kind of give us a chance to change our verbiage on our contract. Did they talk about that?
I had contacted Josh Beck and heard back from him in reference to that, and Josh stated that's kind of why they're waiting to bill us, they have not billed the city yet for our membership, and that at the time there was no real, the contract's pretty much the same thing that we, they had signed with everybody else other than our attachment, and that, you know, they felt that they want to get that back to us, but they've not billed us yet, and if something happens and we can't move forward, then they won't bill us, and then I guess at that time we will dissolve the contract or make a change to the contract that needs to be made.
If I can, Mayor, comment on this, because I was not, I guess here at the last meeting when that contract came up for approval, just to maybe inform the board a little bit about the process, I had emailed correspondence with Josh, is that his name? With Josh, and it was very easy to work with him, he was great to work with, but I received a copy of the contract, and I understand that's the, pretty much the contract they have with everybody. There were some concerns I had with some of the language, because some very general indemnification provisions that I modified and added some language about that they had to comply with all state, federal, and local regulations, because it had a very general indemnification where the city would indemnify for any activities that they participated in, and that language was somewhat objectionable to me, so I inserted some language regarding that. And the other thing was, I changed the language and added as an attachment the specific list that was given to them previously about, I, I called it an audit, and they changed it from an audit to basically a book review. And when I sent that to Josh, my revisions, Josh met with his board and sent me back the revisions that his board had approved, and I said these look fine, and I recommended them to Terry, and I don't know if that was reported back, so I'm a little bit surprised that after they took it to their board with the changes, that they're, I guess, not coming back saying they're not going to sign it.
Well, they, they signed everything, but they still, instead of getting the audit that the city wants.
Well, we didn't use audit in the contract, they didn't like that language, and I agreed with them, because it wa, it's not an audit, I mean, that's a misnomer, it's not an audit at all, it's, it's really an attestation, you know, for the, for the books. So I just wanted to make that clear, because we did have, and they approved it, and they were really easy to work with, and, you know, typically when you go back and forth on contract language, especially with a lawyer involved, it gets muddy, but this one was pretty quick.
You know, the, the cost, I, I guess I understand their concern about, they, they don't want to spend money they don't have to spend, but if, if all the tax entities that is part of this thing, they're all going to want that same audit, you know, and if you share that cost amongst everybody, it doesn't seem so great to them. That, I mean, if it costs us, you know, our, our portion is $300, and the next city's $300, and $300, and pretty soon they've, they've shared the cost of that over everyone, it's not so expensive.
Is, I guess my question would be if, I believe Wright City's participating in this, are we unusual in our requirement for this audit or attestation? It seems that other cities maybe aren't requiring that for funds, or at least it has never been an issue at those cities. Are we unusual in that?
Are you asking me?
Requirement? You or Ms. Thorne?
I mean, I'd be happy to answer it. The discussion related to this type of procedure originally came about through our own auditors, who said if you're providing funds to who said if you're providing funds to an outside entity, and it originally came up through tourism, you need to be assured that procedures are in place to make sure that the money that's being given is spent in the manner that the board intends it to be spent. And so to ensure that there's, that money is really going toward the right place, they said you really need a review of internal controls. And the list that you all saw is a list that was put together basically by our audit firm, to say this is really what you need from a small group related to what you would want to ensure for funds to be distributed to them. So we started it as a result of our auditors questioning whether or not we were requiring it. I can't speak to the other cities and why they do or do not require it, but that's how it started in the city of Warrenton.
I'd just be interested in knowing what other cities view their, their requirements on that, and I'm not questioning that, that we require that, and, and we're following the advice of our auditors, but it's no different than following the advice of an attorney, and they, those, that advice sometimes varies greatly. Again, I'm not, I'm not suggesting that we, that we change it, I, I'm just curious to know why, it, it seems like this issue comes up with the city of Warrenton, and it hasn't elsewhere. Are we doing things right that other cities should be, or is our auditor recommending something that it seems other cities aren't necessarily required to hold themselves to?
Well, one of the things I think is really interesting is kinda taking this step back and look at a broader vision. What came up with Turning Point this year, before, we were a pass-through grantee for Turning Point Shelter. We didn't sponsor them with the same grant before, because before, essentially what would happen, the state would say, you're responsible for that private entities, making sure that they meet all the audit requirements of the state, but we really don't care, we don't really look at that. Well, this past year, they completely changed the contract on us, that essentially put those audit requirements on us, and we had to verify those to the state of Missouri, which then in turn made us turn to Turning Point and say, you guys have to do all this stuff, and some of the stuff was federally protected information that they couldn't do and pass through to us. I think, and my point being is, I think on a state level, and what you're gonna see that funnel down to a more local level, is tighter controls on giving ten thousand dollars or any amount of money to a private entity, you're using public funds, that you have a duty as a steward of the city funds to make sure that that money is spent on a public purpose, not just a duty or legal requirement. So the audit requirement makes sense. What I think is unusual about Warrenton is Warrenton has this tourism tax. Not a lot of cities have a tourism tax. This was passed at a benefit to the city, and if you look at it, these statutes are written for specific cities that probably are using their money for one bigger event, or one larger event at certain points in time coordinated with their cities, but Warrenton has it as a smaller city with this tourism tax, where we distribute it to a lot of entities, whereas, which is really where the question has come up. So I think to look at other cities would be very difficult, because it would be very difficult to find a city that would qualify under our statute for our tourism tax that would be our size, that would give it to the amount of cities they have. But I think you could look at other cities with tourism tax, and probably, my guess would be find similar audit requirements. So, point being, the state is starting to control these things more. That really squeezed us out of, you know, availability for the Turning Point grant, and I think on the other side of it, because we are unique, we're the only city that qualifies under our statute now, it was written that way, for this tourism tax at our size, you would have to really look at other cities that are giving out money the way we are.
Does that apply even, and I, I wasn't speaking specifically to the Economic Development Council, just in general, but specifically to the Economic Development Council, the fact that that is not tourism money that is being given to them, we're still required to...
Well, I think it's really, whether it's required by law or not, I think it's best practice kinda idea. That's pretty much what auditors come and do, and they say, this is a better practice or this is your best practice, to have the tightest control of public funds for public purposes. When you write a ten thousand dollar check and you give it to a private entity, you have a duty, a best practice is some type of verification that that money is then being spent on a public purpose. So I think it makes sense legally, and I think it's a recommendation that would apply to any money given by the city to a private entity, because really, in what arenas do we do, do we give, you know, public money to a private entity like the Greater Economic Development Council? It's an unusual thing, you know? So I think it would apply, the auditor's comments, and correct me if I'm wrong, would apply under that principle of public funds to a private entity for a public purpose, no matter what fund it came from.
Certainly, if the board would choose not to follow the auditor's recommendation, that's a choice that you all can make.
And I'm, I'm certainly not suggesting that. I, I'm, again, it just piqued my interest as to why it seems that we hold ourselves to a standard that maybe other cities don't, but I believe that...
And it's, a lot of it is because we're different than other cities, because we have this tourism fund.
And John, that is something, that is, you'll notice that they did bring that up, you know, did they still need it since it's not coming from tourism? And they said, you know, that they would be better off, and so the city, if we didn't have it, because we're giving them ten thousand to do marketing, but they wouldn't get ten thousand, they'd only get nine thousand or eight thousand. So that was some of their concerns that they wanted me to bring to the board and to discuss with you tonight.
And I do believe that even though the city of Warrenton is the one requiring this, it is a benefit to TruStale and any other entity that is...
I agree.
Providing money, they do get value of it, out of it, even if they are not directly footing any of that expense out of their portion.
Well, and I, you know, the other example I've used too is like the Maytech, you know, sugar fund, you know, the guy that apparently was furnishing his house with the money, you know, what audit requirements were, you know, and that's really what you're trying to avoid, not that they're gonna furnish a house, but...
I may or may not have read that article this morning myself.
Yeah, so I mean, I think the idea is some type of, you know, when you entrust public funds to a private entity, you know, you do lose a certain amount of control, so it's really, it's kinda your receipt back.
Thank you.
So where are we at on the contract now? We have a signed contract back from them.
We have a signed contract, but they have not billed us for our membership till we can resolve this issue.
None of it's anything to resolve, I think, that's what we gave them, and they signed it, now they don't wanna do it, and they don't have to do it, but they don't get our money at the same time.
Do you know whether we want to move forward with Mr. Greville's revised additions or corrections to the contract?
Well, I, I would tell you that already.
No, they already...
Yeah, that's what I was saying, Mayor, it's like, I mean, it was a half a day sending it back and forth, and they agreed to, they had approved the term, they changed some of the terms, but we came to an agreement on the language very quickly, you know, it was not a whole...
That was a dog.
Including the attestation requirements.
Okay, I thought, I thought this was something you'd done after we, we sent the contract, okay. Okay, anybody other, have any other comments or concerns? Did you have anything further on that?
Just that they did have their meeting that the mayor and I attended in Wright City, they received approximately thirty-five hundred dollars from individuals that joined. They're gonna meet with the school district, Warren County School District, this month, hopefully that they'll be able to join. Forestdale and Martha'sville have not committed. Forestdale they need to follow up with, with Martha'sville being without a mayor for a little bit, they're kinda letting Jason get in and get his feet wet, and then they're gonna discuss with him. They have eight projects, six are new employers looking into the area, and two are existing expansions. And I actually received from Josh today, another one looking for some information, so I've sent him some, some properties, and hopefully we'll be able to, to see something come from that.
So do you need an answer from us to take back to them, is that what you're after?
That's what I'm after.
Okay, well, I'm off, just the way that the contract was written with the attachment.
And I'll let them know who the Chamber utilized, and maybe they can contact them and get a price from them, would it be in a lower price than what they've received from other places?
I had spoken with one of our local CPAs, I think Mary Raderman, and she, she has contacts with a larger firm that she uses to do that very thing, and she thought the price would be somewhere around a thousand dollars, so we might want to check with her too. Where are you at on this, Alderman Cornell?
I'm right here. The only thing that I would, Michelle, I guess, I certainly wouldn't expect you to be able to regurgitate all of the words that Attorney Greville just put out, because he put out a lot of words. But I, but I hope that they are of the understanding that, that we are in a unique position, that we are not requiring this audit as opposed to Wright City, because we're just more difficult to deal with, that, that it is something that we feel that we've been advised we need to have that requirement on the funds that we, we authorize, and we wanna work with them, I think that's obvious by actually joining the Economic Development Council. But sometimes I, I think the, the city gets a, a bad rap for not being business friendly in situations where we're just in a unique position in this case, where it's, it just happens to be a requirement we have to, to hold them to.
I will get with Chris and get less words out of that, and get that back to them.
Good luck.
Good luck with that. Put on a timer.
Alderman Flake, you have any comments on this?
No, I don't.
Alderman Dyer?
No.
Okay, are we good then?
Yes. And the last thing I have for you is O'Reilly Auto Parts is having a grand opening, but I cannot give you a date at this time. They're having kind of like a week-long thing from June thirteenth to the twenty-third, and they don't quite know the, I've met with the manager, and he's there, but the, I believe it's the regional director is out on vacation this week, so she's got, you know, kinda the schedule, what's going on, so when I have that, I will get back with you, so that you can have all of that, but just wanted to kinda let you be aware of that.
Okay, that all?
That is all, have a good evening.
Thank you, Michelle.
Thank you.
I'm on item eighteen, Recreation Director Jenny Hoffman.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and Board. Thank you for hearing my request for the road closure for Catch the Road. Based on the last time that we closed the roads, the only concern that people were not adequately informed, we have already visited Main Street, talked to some business owners, handed out a heads-up and an event flyer. Our plan is to, tomorrow morning, as soon as we have the approved details from the board, we will mail out that follow-up confirmation letter. That'll at that time inform them of the exact streets and the times for the closure. So my request tonight is that we allow for two road closures, and the first one is for the five K run. It's kind of minimal, and it's sort of a rolling road closure, which allows for the path of the run. And then there is the event road closure. The event road closure will take place from ten AM on June twenty-third until two AM on Sunday, June twenty-four. And the specific information on those roads is listed on that memo that you have received.
Any questions or concerns? We need a motion to authorize the, the two road closures for the June twenty-third five K run and the Catch the Globe. Those on the same day?
That's correct, Mayor. The five K run slash walk that takes place in the morning, eight AM, and then the event itself is that eve, that afternoon from four PM until midnight.
So moved.
Motion made by Alderman Tallo, seconded by Alderman Dyer to authorize the closures on June twenty-third for the five K run and Catch the Globe. All of them in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed likewise. Motion carried four to zero with two absences. City Clerk Melody Rude.
What I have for you, the moratorium that was done for the hundred and eighty day, which is lifting the restrictions for the real estate banner signs, was done back on January seventeenth of two thousand twelve, and it's set to expire on July fifteenth. So I was checking to see if the board would like to extend that another one hundred and eighty days, or how they feel about that.
I've got no problem extending it.
Anyone have a concern over that?
I do not.
No, we're fine with it.
Need a motion?
No, sir.
No.
I'll just go ahead and put it on the next agenda.
What else you have, Melody?
That's it.
We need to...
Mayor Dyer, if you would allow, I was hoping to wrap up my time with just an update for the board and the mayor, if that's okay?
Sure.
In the Recreation Department, we've been trying to take some time and listen to some of the requests that we're hearing from the public. One of the things that we came across recently was a request from some of our pool patrons. One of the things that they have mentioned is that they would like to be able to pay for some daily visits with the use of a debit card or a credit card. And then another thing that's been brought up is that there are a select group of patrons that don't quite visit the pool enough to warrant the purchase of a season's pass, but at the same time, they'd like to have a few purchased daily visits on hand, so that maybe they can share that within their family. And so one of the things that we came up with was the concept of a ten-day visit pass, and this would be a visit pass that was based on the face value of admission, so we're talking about ten admissions, three dollars each, so for thirty dollars, somebody can come to City Hall, purchase that ten-day visit pass with a debit, credit card, or cash or check, and that would allow them to have this pass, have it available for their family to share. It's at face value, so there's no reason for us to request proof of identification. One of the other things is that the environment at the pool isn't quite conducive for the installation of a credit card machine or something else of that nature. So looking at some of the information that we're getting back from our customers and what's available to us, I have developed plans to create this ten-day visit pass for the customers, have it for sale as soon as possible. As long as none of the board members or the mayor have any strong objections to this, I'll go ahead and get that in place.
So it's a random ten days, whichever ten days are in use?
That's right, and the pass will be laminated, it'll feature ten small squares. As they arrive at the pool and enter the pool, that cashier will just punch a hole in one of those small boxes, and it'll expire after all ten small boxes have been hole-punched.
Anyone have concerns over that? I think we're fine with it.
Thank you for coming up with something to meet their needs.
Thank you, thank you for your time.
We have, we need to do it at ordinance, is that right?
Yes, we do.
Call for the first reading of Bill number twenty-one dash twelve.
Second.
Are you gonna read those? Okay. Motion made by Alderman Tallo, seconded by Alderman Dyer for reading of Bill number twenty-one dash twelve.
An ordinance authorizing execution of an agreement between Coventry Healthcare of Missouri Incorporated, Tri-County Agency, and the City of Warrenton, Missouri for billing services.
Call for second final reading and pass it to Bill number twenty-one dash twelve.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Flake, seconded by Alderman Tallo for second and final reading of Bill number twenty-one dash twelve.
An ordinance authorizing execution of an agreement between Coventry Healthcare of Missouri Incorporated, Tri-County Agency, and the City of Warrenton, Missouri for billing services.
Roll call vote.
Alderman Dyer?
Yes.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alderman Tallo?
Yes.
Motion carried four to zero with two absences. What did I forget? Something else? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn into executive session for personnel and litigation.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Tallo, seconded by Alderman Cornell to move to executive session for personnel and litigation. Roll call vote.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alderman Tallo?
Yes.
Alderman Dyer?
Yes.
Motion carried four zero with two absences.
Motion to adjourn?
Four zero.